Go ahead and call this special meeting, Board of Commissioners/Work Session into order. We are live streaming this, just as a reminder to the VOC, so that anybody interested in wastewater can listen in tonight. So, where are we starting this evening? Who gets the ball?
Sure. I'll take it. So, we're going to talk about wastewater this evening, and you all had asked that we bring this forward to help kind of refine your understanding of what, what systems are in place in the county and what kind of systems we want in place in the county. We have Ralph Hollowell and Kevin Carver from Albemarle Regional Health Services here with us today, and then I think our, our planning staff will help chime in as well. So, at your seat, you'll have, you've got Section 6.2.3 E, Utility Standards of the UDO. This is the excerpt of the UDO that speaks to sewage disposal. And then there's also a, planning, a text amendment that was adopted in 2013, and this is the text amendment that revised the current language that you see in the UDO today. This was adopted to allow for a decentralized system at University Park, the Alon Vacations property down at the southern end of the county.
Of course, the, you know what, I saw it on here, so it didn't click.
I've got it pulled up here, too. But I did want to highlight, so these are the definitions that come directly out of the Unified Development Ordinance about centralized wastewater versus decentralized wastewater. And so, I'll let you read through those definitions, and I'll leave them up just for reference as you all move through the conversation. But I think, you know, our understanding, or at least my understanding maybe, is that you are considering limitations on private centralized systems. And so, I think, you know, from, from a legal perspective, I'm not sure that we can say, we'll defer to Megan on that ultimately, but I'm not sure that we can say no, we're, you cannot have private central wastewater systems in the county. But I think from a planning, from a zoning perspective, that is how you can control that type of development. And I know there's a text amendment that should be coming before you the next meeting that speaks to densities and densities with or without central sewer. So, and, excuse me, yeah, land amendment. So, that, that's also coming. So, a few different things to think about here, but, you know, if you have questions about decentralized systems or septic systems, systems that are, are regulated by Albemarle Regional Health Services, you know, Ralph and Kevin are here to speak to that, and just generally what, what you're looking for.
I don't know, you brought up a good point, I think. We, we had thought, or we had discussed several years ago now, probably, not allowing a private system, basically, based on the experiences we've had with private systems and how they're being operated. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And so, I guess that's what kind of spawned this, was it spring out of something else?
Well, I think it was twofold. One, that was an aspect, but I also was asking for an update on the Moayac wastewater plant. I, I know we were waiting on chemicals. Where, where are we in that process?
All right. So, we've been operational since the end of August. The first monthly sampling was, was close to compliance and much improved over the, the previous plant. The bacteria are, are having time now to kind of adjust and, and become beneficial, so to speak, and establish themselves. The second monthly sampling, which we don't have back yet, are really hopeful that it'll be fully compliant.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And the capacity of that, that system is 100,000?
Correct.
And because I've been pressed on the availability, we have promised wastewater to commercial?
I, I don't know that we have, so, because we don't, I think we're trying to get over the hurdle of, of being compliant first, right?
No, I understand, but I'm-
And then it will be first come, first served, but yeah, I think the focus, yes, is commercial.
What, what kind of capacity do we have?
We have remaining. I want to say it's around 25,000 gallons.
Okay. And it's when you-
Go ahead, Kev.
Oh, sorry. When you said first come, first served, I mean, don't we have like a list of a few that are on there, kind of?
We do, I mean, we certainly have folks that we've been talking to for an extended period of time, but it'll, you know, you have to have your, your development moving through the process.
Or if it was a commercial, if it's a site for whatever.
I guess, you know, years ago, when the failed plant, it seems like that was set up for, really for commercial, like that was the idea, was to develop that for commercial. So, are we allowed to say that the remaining capacity is going to be reserved for commercial solely from a legal standpoint? Is that something we can legally do? I mean, I, we, we've got, you know, plenty of, plenty of development coming in and coming through. We don't-
Yeah, I don't-
Not having them take up that capacity when, when a business would be good.
I think it goes along with what Rebecca was saying. It's, it would be pretty much first come, first served, so whoever gets their application in, I don't think we can really pick and choose what types can hook up to that. I think really, the, the only tools that we have in this regard is like zoning and things like that, but I don't think we can just pick and choose and, and deny somebody because they're not commercial.
I think, can we check on that? Because it was going to be just commercial, and somebody flipped the switch and reversed it, and unfortunately, unfortunately, our archival records keeper isn't here, but I'm pretty sure they flipped the switch on and it went, instead of commercial, it went like residential, so-
I'll look into that.
Because that's not the original, that wasn't the original intent.
Right.
Right. No, certainly the original intent was for commercial.
Yeah.
I think that the residential users that were added was for Lakeview subdivision.
We figured out we needed residential, we needed more flow, we needed to increase the flow to get the, everything happy.
To prove that the system was a bad design, so, you know.
I'm confident, though, the, the allocation will go to predominantly commercial. I mean, that's been the-
If we can, I think that's, I mean, we may have a firm commitment, I want to say, to the subdivision behind Food Lion. We may owe them-
Yeah.
Fifty-five, that was the rate? Yeah, they were one of the ones originally.
Yeah.
And so was-
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Roger. That was like in 2013 as well.
Yeah, Dan was still-
Yeah.
Because it got approved when I was-
Right.
Yeah, Mayfair Commons.
Yeah. And then with the, the funds from the state, where are we on? The first question is, what are we going to do next, right? Because we've got these plants up and running, are we, because the original intent was 300,000 gallons. So, are we looking to add 200,000, add 300,000, and then maybe move these somewhere else?
So, we're still looking at, at 300,000.
Okay.
Let's see here. Okay, so we have the design build contract with TA Loving and Kimberly Horn. We, we don't have, I should take that back, we are still working through that contract. We don't have a contract with them yet.
Okay.
So, we're still working through that.
Good.
Right now, we're, we're still based on 300,000 to 400,000 gallons per day.
Right. Okay.
And will the, will the system that's there currently be incorporated into that? Is that thought, because the original thought-
That's the, that's the thought process right now.
Right. Right. Okay.
So, okay.
And then, then speaking to the, the directed funds, so we had to, after the, let's jump out of my head, after the General Assembly changed the use of the funds to $16 million for water or sewer, we had to amend our directed funds application, so that was submitted, and we're still waiting to get that back from the state.
Okay. The, one of the reasons I'm glad Albemarle Health is here is following our last rainstorm, I don't know who saw on Facebook the peat pods floating in their holes.
The what?
So, I ask that-
Just for like a secondary, oh, um-
No, no, this is the, so the way they get away with significant drain fields in the Outer Banks are peat systems.
Oh, yeah, I have, yeah, I had one at my house on this one.
Well, these were bobbing in the hole, so, not good, right? When they overflow, that's why you don't want the kids swimming in the-
Right.
-street. But, and Ralph, if you or your designated other, what I, what I'm looking for is-
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up. You don't even have to-
Yeah.
Have to state his name and address?
No, we're just, uh-
No.
Checking.
For the record, you are.
So, so a couple of things, if you could go through, there's something, there's an inspection system that Albemarle Health has that certain septic systems are supposed to be inspected on an annual basis. I don't, I am not sure how that applies to who and who's under that program, but if you could kind of give us an oversight on that, and then as far as, you know, like the peat systems, for example, what, what do we do when they're bobbing?
Are you referring, I guess, to management of those or others, too? Well, the peat systems, I think, the one, what you're referring to at the beach that they floated up were easy treat systems, which is a different technology than the peat systems, so-
I'm just talking about the ones that were floating in the holes, whatever those are.
It's a pretreatment, but it, they were easy treat, is what they're called. So, they're filled actually with these bags full of like Styrofoam beads and, so there's really, there's really no wastewater that collects in there and stays in there.
Okay.
The tanks actually did-
That's why they're so light.
They're all pods, but they've been, they're actually working to get those actually silted back down and re-levelled, so.
So, they're still out of the ground or floating, kind of?
They are out of culture a little bit.
Some of them have been re, have been redone, because we actually went down there, because I got the photos myself, so.
How many systems?
All the pretreatment systems that go in, we do, they do have to join our inspection program, and we do go down and inspect them, and they have been inspected, just so everybody knows, and we, they are managed and monitored. Now, they have an operator that operates the system. They have to contract them, but we are like the middle man. And I learned this year that we need to be the middle man to make sure that they are, that they are monitored like they should be. I mean, when you go up to a control panel and it's growed up with vines, that signifies that everybody's been there a while.
Right.
So, that's where we come into play and say, wait a minute, you know, this needs to be done properly. Now, all your, our, other alternative systems, like the sandline trench systems and all, they are also inspected. A lot of those on the mainland that we look at. I think we have, it's like 800 large system, or what we call large systems, the pretreatment, I believe somewhere in-
It's close.
The area of 800 that we look at, over in Corolla, Corova, and then over here, we have some-
Yeah, there's some on the mainland, yeah.
And then the regular ones are like your standard gravity fed systems that we oversee.
Would you guys, based on what you've seen, with, obviously, with, if you've got Styrofoam in there and you've got a tank, it's going to float, right? Is there, is there, would you suggest making changes based regionally on where we're at? I mean, that's going to be a problem. We just haven't had any rain and, a significant rain event like that in a while, but as he's become more prevalent, probably, I'm guessing we'll see them more frequently, especially with some of these bigger homes.
Those pods were actually, I guess, approved at the state level, so other than having maybe a policy of ballast type, you know, anchoring type systems, they're supposed to have flanges on them that would prevent such an event like that. I guess we'd have to talk with-
You, we don't, I'll be honest, when it comes to the number, types of systems, there are numerous types of new pretreatment-
Right.
-types, and, and just giving you an example, I mean, I just learned this week or last week, I was at a meeting, there is now a system that they're looking at that can be designed by an engineer that can go underneath the driveway. Say in Corova, you can actually have the system under the driveway, and it has vent pipes that come out the side, and it has to be an engineered design system by, just, you know, just to give, and actually, they've already installed one in Dare County, and I think they're looking to do another one. So, there are-
My buddy just had to tear one up. He's, he's a septic guy up in Virginia, and he just, he was calling me to tell me, you won't believe what these idiots did, and he was dealing with that exact thing, so he had to tear out somebody's very nice concrete Stamp Creek driveway to-
Oh, my gosh. So, there's numerous types of systems, and not only that, but we have, in our district, we've always tried to work with the counties and the commissioners and individuals on work with properties to try to put in a system that we feel like is going to work, if it's designed properly, sited properly, installed, installed properly, maintained and managed properly, does not affect the public health, does not affect the environment, then it becomes a, what we look at as a investment for the county, tax base, and investment for the homeowner. And that's what we, that's what we try to do now. The thing of it is that, that, I think you all need to understand, too, is there, there are other individuals out there that can bypass us, engineered operations permits, the AOWE Authorized On-Site Wastewater Evaluators, that can actually, soil scientists, they can start doing these systems. But we have always had a good working relationship, and Kevin's over here 99.9% of the time with everyone and our contractors, and that's something that truthfully mind boggles the state, because they're like, man, y'all actually have a working relationship with you guys. And that's what we try to do, because they, they don't want problems, and we don't want problems, so we try to work together to prevent problems. But no matter what you do, you're going to have problems, what we, what we come up with. But even, I don't think, there's no way you can stop pretreatment or stop certain types of systems being installed. I think if they're in the rules, we, we can.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that that's a problem necessarily, just that there needs to be an augmentation if, you know, given the environment we're in, that you guys have to anchor it down or ballast it, like you said, if you've got to throw some concrete blocks in the bottom of it to keep them popping out, you know?
There are rules for tanks. There's plastic tanks that you can put in the ground versus concrete, and you have to, you have to ballast, put ballast.
Right.
You know, some people do parking curving and stuff with non-stretchable straps and stuff like that.
Right.
Nothing really for concrete tanks.
Well, yeah, they're, they're generally going to stay put, right? Unless it's empty and you just stuck in the ground and had a big rainstorm and it might pop out, but, I mean, I had, I had an alternative system, the peat system, it had peat and gravel, it wasn't going anywhere at my other home, so.
They only get fun if they're underwater.
Right.
Right. Which on Lighthouse is not, actually, in Corolla, that's not uncommon. So, the, the wastewater system is actually underwater.
That's pretty bad.
So, you heard kind of what we're thinking, or we're talking about centralized private versus, what are your feelings as far as centralized private versus, you know, the other options or things that we're looking at? I mean, what would, what would you all prefer?
You know, I know a lot of this is probably stemmed from Eagle Creek episode, if everything's going there. That's one thing that, that was a nightmare, a lot of things, a lot of issues. And one thing I had mentioned, and I'm probably going to get scolded for saying this, scolded or whatever you call it, might get scolded.
Maybe both.
But one of my things of Eagle Creek is, we, you know, everybody's pointing fingers at the, the operator that was operating the system, and how, hey, they were the ones that were doing it. But how many pointed the fingers at DEQ? Because they approved it 20 some years ago, and they're supposed to be monitoring that thing continuously.
Right.
So, how many times did they actually physically come down and monitor that system to make sure the operators are doing what they were supposed to be?
They were here a bunch when it failed.
Well-
Exactly.
So, I guess, you know, I had come, I had come before the commissioners, your board, several years back, and requested that if, if we went, if you all decided to go further with pretreatment systems, that we would be involved to a point as a middle man, just to be able to visit the site periodically and walk through them and make sure that everybody's being straight with what's going on.
Can you give us an example of a pretreatment system? Like a privately owned?
As, as far as like a residential or commercial?
Are you talking about like a residential?
Well, we don't have a whole lot of commercials.
Is Backwood, is Backwood Reserves a pretreatment system off of South Mills?
No, they're, they're individual septic systems. They have, they have like a community well, water-
Yeah, okay, I knew they had something.
Yeah, that's completely, completely different. I mean, something like a, a pretreatment would be some of your larger homes in Whalehead, or, you know, maybe they want to add a couple extra bedrooms, be able to get a pool and stuff like that, so you're allowed a reduced footprint with your septic system. So, the state allows you up to several reductions now, but one is a square footage reduction. So, basically, you're treating water to like super clean standards. I'm not saying super clean, but ditch water clean anyway.
Right.
So, basically, what you're getting rid of is, is basically water. And so, they allow, you know, to get that, they reward you basically for spending a little bit of extra money, but with that comes, like he was saying, maintenance and things like that. You know, monitoring, sampling is done, some of those systems are sampled a couple times a year. Some of, some of your commercial properties and stuff have some pretreatment on it to get that, you know, say restaurants would have extra seats allowed, because you get a, a square footage reduction on your drain field, things like that, so.
Well, just like on the Eagle Creek plan, I know where, which, and, and I mean, I don't work for the state, so I really don't care if they watch this and hear it, but I mean, just like the simple, the clearing of all that property that Tim Posch did back there on the back, and I don't know if anybody, like on the ninth hole at the golf course, Kevin, I know you've played there before, they cleared, what, 15 acres?
It was quite a deal.
And it was like, you never know, and I mean, like, you know, far as all the work that was done there, and DEQ said that was supposed to be cleared, well, those trees were 20-year-old trees, so I don't think anybody's been there in a while. And it, just as an example, but like you said, it's, they're, I mean, they're in, where you said with the weeds, when it's growing up or whatever, there's people out there working every, I mean, they're, you know, with the different, what do they call the, where they have the pits in their yard, there's somebody out there every day, so I mean, I think the maintenance is being done on it now, and it has gotten it back, yeah, back into shape.
Oh, yeah, I think so as well.
I mean, treatment systems like Kimarlet, the, I say the smaller houses up front, I don't even know what it's called.
The cottages.
Yeah.
The cottages, yeah.
So, that is an engineered type system, as basically all those homes are, it's a small septic system, there's no treatment ahead of it, but it's a, it's a dispersal method that does save you some space, I mean, so it did allow them, by having that engineered, so, engineered style, but I mean, it, it did allow them to utilize that property, whereas if they had to go a conventional system, it wouldn't work.
No, but I think, too, the difference in the soils, too, compared to Moayac, that soil down there is, you can put a shovel in that, and just some of the soil in Moayac, you can put a shovel in concrete easier.
Yeah, and that's where it comes in with us working with the, with the developers and, and everyone on the, based on the soil conditions, because every size is different. And that's something sometimes that I guess concerns me, maybe I'm just partial to it, but I, you know, when you get EOPs and you have private sector come in, and we really don't have any say-so, it makes it kind of-
Yeah, we don't have any jurisdiction either at all.
Yeah, so we, I mean, hey, they're designing, we have no say-so, nobody does, basically.
So, what, what kind of resource can you be to us, or systems, or developments, or subdivisions, or something like that? I mean, I know they're getting it engineered and DOT or DO, DEQ is stamping that or approving that, but are there things that you could help us with from, hey, no one's thinking of this, or? And I kind of toss that out, Bill, to you as well.
They're trying to deal with right now with the general statutes, I mean, you're looking for a very, a very common, is, you know, when you go get health department approval, put something in your backyard, now you can bypass them. I think you've got 10 days to answer, you know, yea or nay to it, and if they don't answer, let's go. So, we've had, it's, yeah, it's, they've opened up the gates and bypassed because delays with, I guess, other health departments and throughout the state, taking the gift prom rates and things like that. They've opened it up now, if you've got an engineer or soil scientist, depending on the type of system that, bypass the health department now, you just got to give them, there's an appendix H out there now for homeowners, so if you want to put a deck in your backyard, you can sign this waiver saying that you're, you're taking a risk of putting something maybe on top of the septic system or not, and they just, we're, we're trying to figure out a way to, when we get those, to turn and move them so they have a record that the owner signed off on, that's saying they're putting more to it, putting them.
In case something happened to it.
It's, it's getting more and more, it's going more to the private sector. 30 years ago, I was told that that would never happen, it would never go private, it's going that way more and more every, every year. It's going more and more private. But again, as I said in the beginning, we have always had a good working relationship with all our region, really our entire region, and I think in Kirtuck County, we've only had, what, three EOPs, and that was for Dollar Junals, because they always do that everywhere, but so far as everybody else is like-
You come on in.
Yeah, we'd rather go to you guys, even if we, if it takes a little bit longer, we'd rather deal with you all.
I will say this, and, and I know, I've known Kevin personally forever, too, but like whenever somebody's had a problem or whatever, like, I mean, I roll through him and, I mean, like, he, I mean, he's, he helps, he gets it done, I mean, he's like 7-Eleven, I mean, the guy's 24/7, he's always working, so.
Oh, my gosh.
But no, but no, I mean, we're lucky, I mean, like you said-
Give him any breaks next round of golf.
No, it ain't, it ain't that. I know, I mean, just, he, I mean, he's, you're a good reliable source for when people have issues, not, and I'm not saying a builder or somebody, I'm saying homeowners, I know he's fixed and helped and, you know, like I said, I mean-
That is, I agree with you 100% on that, and then you walk out, you hit a piece of soil.
Yeah.
But the, but one thing I will say, too, is so far as the working with people, that's something that, again, the state is always shocked at, because we, there's a lot of times you can solve problems and not tick everybody off, get it resolved, save it from going to lawyers, the county being sued, and that's where, I think, when it gets to Raleigh, that's where it stops. It don't happen that way, they think, you know, I mean, there always, I don't know how many lawsuits the state has right now. It's a ton of them, people suing them over the septic. Well, how many, in my 30 years, I can count on my hands how many we've had, and that's none, zero, because we've always had, Kevin and myself has always taken the mentality, let's try to figure this out ourselves, let's leave the state out of it, because if you get them involved, I can 100% guarantee it's going to get screwed up.
You sound pretty confident about that.
I probably won't have their license after leaving, not, because it's being televised, so I reckon that's your phone going off.
Hey, no, hey, no, nobody's watching it, you're good.
They'd have to watch the video on YouTube, so, if they are, ask them when they did it and why they were watching videos on their, on their account, state's done.
Am I not right in what I'm saying?
We just, we just had a meeting with our regional two weeks ago, last week, and he was talking about- We just, we just had a meeting with our regional two weeks ago last week, and he was talking about problems in the state and, uh, solve our own problems.
Yeah, I mean, they got tons of lawsuits. I mean, it's amazing.
I'm talking about buying houses, buying lots, you know, basically where the AG's office is having, and now that's being.
Give you an example, I had one, I don't know how many years it's been about, the state was gonna have to spend, with a county, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They asked me if I would just go look at it, so I solved it, solved it in twenty minutes, still working, they never had to buy nothing back. But they couldn't figure it out, cause they were trying to make it too complicated. I mean, it's just that kind of mentality, and it don't, you've got to work with people. And you can do it and not pollute the environment and, you know, public health, protect public health.
Could, could I ask you to talk about the different options for, like, larger systems that are gonna be treating more than one property? The different types of permitting options, because there's a permit option through DEQ, right? Then there's this engineered option, and then I suppose you can also permit a system through the health department. Can you just kind of overview what that process, those processes look like?
Yeah, DEQ, when, when it goes DEQ, we like, okay, it's your baby rider.
Those are typically big, big systems.
Like, how many gallons per day?
Well, I mean, we can, we can permit, well, like the schools, I mean, you know, like ten thousand gallons, but I'm saying, a lot of times, when it goes to DEQ, you're looking at some kind of treatment type plant.
Major treatment.
Like a, you know, I guess a collection type system that sends it to a plant, things like that.
Some type of big package treatment plant.
And that, that would be considered a centralized system?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, I mean, I could read the definition.
I suppose it could be a decentralized.
Yeah, I would think it would be something like that, for sure.
And then the, as far as the engineering operation permit, I mean, that can be for single dwelling right on.
Yeah, it can be for a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom house, as an engineered option permit, or a soil scientist that's authorized to do that himself. He can permit anything from a one-bedroom all the way up. Now, soil scientist has to be in conjunction with an engineer if it does involve any kind of engineering, you know, with any kind of treatment or major pumping or things like that, so it has to go to an engineered option permit versus the AOWE. Such as some of them in Whalehead, ten, twelve bedroom houses that have pre-treatment, that has to be done under an engineered option permit.
And that's, but that's still delivered to your office, that's not.
We are a record holder, but we have no legal authority.
Right, and no one reviews that, is that?
We just file it.
We just review it for completeness.
For completeness, correct.
I think we have to sign that we received it.
Yeah, they have to send us a, it's called a notice of intent, and then we have to, and then they can move forward, and then they have to notice, give us a notice that of completion, and then all we are is kind of a record holder for that.
And we are both soil scientists for the region, so we, that helps us make some decisions as well.
Typically, anything that's permitted, I say if it has to go to the state over three thousand gallons a day, anything that is permitted from, from our office or in the Raleigh office goes to a drain field typically. You know, I think maybe, you know, like Eagle Creek is, I don't even know where that's discharged at, I don't know if it's spray irrigation, it's spray.
Yes, the golf, yeah.
So things like that, so I mean, there, there's a whole different level of treatment, things like that disposal pretty much, so.
From a consumer standpoint, what would be the benefit of going with the engineered system where you all are the, the record holder? And that's about it.
You're talking about an engineered system on a lot?
Mm-hmm.
Space, value, go out waterfront lot, you know, is, do you have limitations, wetlands, cammer? Or like, say, any kind of surface water? In other words, something that, where basically setbacks from water or whatever, the value of the property would justify an expensive type system, typically, so, yeah.
Do you, also possibly when there's, you gotta get creative with drain fields? Is that also a possibility? Creative with drain fields, like, you know, different spacing, different lengths, different?
You can, but yeah, those are, those are pretty low, I don't even know, correct term, low tech maybe, you know, they're pretty easy. Pressure manifold is.
That's why they work.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, that's a pretty simple technology, but yeah. Different length lines, things like that, absolutely, yeah, you can do that.
And like, you know, I did mention just, I put that on your radar, so y'all will be aware of back there under the driveway systems, cause that.
That's a great idea.
That is something that's gonna be, you know, the porous driveways, the rock driveways, they're actually, just so y'all.
I think under the pool would be a great idea too.
Putting it in a pool?
Underneath, underneath the pool.
It probably is coming down.
Yeah, I want a bigger pool, so that might be happening.
There you go.
I don't want my wife does, I suppose that might be.
I mean, these pre-treatment systems are pretty much a, I say centralized, you got UV ball phone somehow, that could be, I mean, so, you know, they're got disinfectant team and everything. So I mean, it's, it's basically a mini treatment, just for a residential home.
As long as they're monitored and maintained, that's one of the key things.
And I think that's where all the problems came from Eagle Creek, because it wasn't monitored and maintained, I mean.
One hundred percent guaranteed.
It definitely wasn't maintained, it definitely wasn't monitored.
Yeah, a lot of the pre-treatment systems have to be sampled at least once a year. And they have to send us the reports and stuff like that, that's why we're kind of, I say, he said the middleman, gotta make sure they have an operator, gotta make sure they're turning in their reports. We gotta look at the sample results, things like that, so if there is something out of kilter, then we typically get up, but the operator who then gets up.
So is the, is the homeowner paying the operator to run their system?
Yes.
So if they don't run their system and the system fails, then the homeowner goes hunting the operator?
Yeah, they're basically non-compliance, so they are, you know, they're not in violation, but they're non-compliance.
Okay.
I don't know the legal difference to me, but you can go after them and you can put them on notice that they have hired an operator, so.
Sweet.
Okay, good, anything further, all right. John, thank you very much for coming out this evening and.
Thank you.
Cloudy, cloudy water further.
Of course, I appreciate it.
You have any questions, feel free to give us a call.
All right, thank you.
Your office.
Becca, did you have anything further, or?
Do you all have anything further, I mean, I'm not, I, I will say as an.
Thing for us was understanding private systems that, you know, and more like Eagle Creek type systems and whether or not we can, it sounds like we can't really say you can't use that to a developer.
I don't, right, but I think you can, you know, through your, essentially through zoning, you can control where and.
What goes into them.
When.
Right, okay. All right, something to keep in mind for the future.
Sweet.
All right, well, if there's nothing further, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I moved.
Second.
Did you get that, Leanne? Thank you, all favor.
See you, Harvard. Bye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, we'll be back in fifteen, twenty minutes.